Okay. The meeting of the Somerville Planning Board for February 28th, 2024 will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been... Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meeting Act has been provided. A copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location was one posted on the bulletin board outside Borough Hall, two mailed, faxed, or emailed to the Courier-News, and three given to the Kirk Administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call.
Chairman Novato?
Yeah, here.
Ms. Rosensky. Mayor Gallagher?
Here.
Councilman Vroom?
Here.
Ms. Adair?
Here.
Ms. Warner? Mr. Craska?
Here.
Mr. Krestes?
Here.
Mr. Cleveland?
Here.
Okay, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the minutes for February 14th.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? Okay.
Chairman Novato?
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilman Vroom?
Yes.
Ms. Adair? Mr. Craska?
Yes.
Mr. Krestes?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Okay, my comments are going to be fairly brief. We... I'll open the meeting up to the public, and then immediately following that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session, and we will adjourn to executive session, so... At this point, I will open it up to the public for comment.
Bill Cisco, 37 Eastern Avenue. Good to see you all again. I have a question or concern about the building on the corner of Davenport and High Street. This is across from the back of the Somerville Middle School, right? It is currently being rebuilt, and as you know, I drop my kids off there, so I see it almost every day. And I was very surprised when I saw the third level go up on it. And comparing, if you look up and down High Street, from Bridge Street to Mountain Avenue, every other building on that street, on that area, is a two-story with an attic level, two-and-a-half-story building. This building, right now, assuming there's going to be a roof put on it, is going to be a three-and-a-half, four-story building, and it looks out of place already. So...
Well, before you go on, this Board did not have jurisdiction over that. That was a Board of Adjustment application.
That's the zoning board.
I don't know the difference between the zoning board and the planning board.
Yeah, we didn't... We did not approve that.
Well, but there's got to be a plan. I understand that. Maybe that's... Okay, that's fine. You didn't approve it, but there's got to be a plan in place for the height of... Or the... What... I guess my question is, what is the plan for High Street? In 10 years from now, 15 years from now, based on the current plan that is in place today, does this planning board want High Street to look like Main Street, or do you want it to look like it looks today? And the reason I ask that question is because what's going on right now in that building sets a precedent for that strip of High Street to turn into Main Street. So I would like to know, what is the plan for High Street?
The plan is the same as every other residential zone in the borough. There's a limitation of two-and-a-half stories, 35 feet, I think, in that zone, and if you go to Cliff Street, down Bridge Street, wherever you go, that's the plan. People go to the Board of Adjustment to get relief from those requirements, and that's what happened.
Why doesn't... Why don't we say no? Why was this not rejected?
You have to ask the Board of Adjustment that. I wish I could help you, but I can't.
Again, so...
Yeah, let me...
But there's a... We have a plan. You just said that we have a two-and-a-half-story thing, and we make exceptions. Why would we make an exception?
And that is something that you'd have to ask, or look at the minutes of the zoning board. That was approved sometime, I'm assuming, last year.
Yeah.
At some point. So, just in general, we have a zoning ordinance, and it's based upon the different zones. So it's a R1, R2, R3, POR, different zones, and that dictates all of those requirements within that zone. If somebody wants to put something in that's different, that deviates, or there's a variation from what is allowed in that zone, they go to the zoning board of approval, and they have to prove that there's a... What's the term? There's a beneficial use?
Right.
A benefi... A need, a beneficial use, for the deviation from the zone. That's not something... This body crafts the zone. The Borough Council approves the zone. The zoning board hears the variations to that.
So they basically override your... Overrode your...
No, it's not an override. What they have to do is... It's a judicial body, so there has to be evidence that's presented that presents their case for... To allow it to happen, or not happen.
So another person could come in and make an exact same claim, and build it right next to it, another four or five-story building, and it could get approved. And so that's my concern, is that with that High Street, based on what was just approved, there's now... We now have precedent from that board, that they will allow four-story buildings on High Street. It now looks out of place.
We can't help you with it.
Why not?
Why not?
Why... Can council take this up?
We cannot interfere with what the Board of Adjustment does. Applicants have to go and make a case, and there are... In the municipal land use law, there is a list of standards that they have to adhere to in order to make a case before the Board of Adjustment, and apparently, they did. So...
So why would they approve this, when it knows that it's out of character and be... And it does not apply... Go along with the planning board's recommendations?
I can tell you... I'll answer you honestly. I don't know. I wasn't... I wasn't here.
Yeah, I understand.
I don't know.
Well, none of this worked.
I'm very concerned by this.
Yeah.
I think this needs to be addressed, maybe by the council, that maybe this plan... The zoning board, sorry, not the planning board, that's you guys. Zoning board is running amok right now and not looking at the best interest. And so I know we've talked about doing a... You've mentioned doing a complete reevaluation of all the plant... All the zones in Somerville. Now, one, what I just learned is that that doesn't mean much, because this zoning board can override it, so that's a problem. But two, I would encourage you all to do it as fast as possible. We now have two visible issues that the town can see, the gun store and now this building, that, you know, that the plans are not bringing us to where we want to be. And I bring it back, there was a social commentary from a resident of Westfield that was just published the other day, and she complained about what Westfield has become, and that resonated with me very much, and so very concerned about Somerville growing too fast, too much, and becoming what Westfield is now, which is what we don't want. Somerville is close to what Westfield is in its heyday. We should maintain what it is today and not... And protect it, not... We have to be very careful of overgrowth. That's what... That's my reason for being here today and bringing up this building, is protecting the growth of Somerville and making sure we don't turn into the next Westfield, where it's just unmanageable.
So also, Bill, just so you know... All louder than expected there. Those are all public meetings as well, so they're the other Wednesdays from when we meet.
I can only have a certain number of meetings I can go to. I've got a family, you know, so I'm counting on, you know...
Us too, so we're not at those meetings either.
Yeah.
But so anybody who makes that application does have to go, and if there is opposition from the neighbors, they all have to get noticed. Everybody within a certain range gets noticed that there's a meeting about that and what it's about, so that they can go and do what you're doing, but at the zoning board for those applications. Just so you know.
How soon can this full review... What's that? I'm sorry.
Also published on the website, the borough's website.
I'm sorry. I just... It's just frustrating. Yeah, we have all these different meetings and zones and boards and all this stuff. I'm bringing it to your attention. I hope you guys do something with it, because very concerned about what this building, the precedent it sets. And I would think... I would hope that maybe you, Mayor Gallagher, and the council can just put an emergency stoppage to all building and going on right now until this full review can be completed.
That's not...
I understand it can't... I understand it can't be done, but I just want it on record that I think with the gun store issue, this issue, that we need to act with haste and get this done fast. There's a lot going on, so...
Yeah, there is a lot going on, and what I can tell you, and I told you before the meeting started, we're actually going to adjourn into executive to craft the RFP, to hire the professionals who will address master plan, zoning plan, redevelopment plans, all of those plans that you're talking about, because we need to.
Yeah.
It's time.
And I think we need to do it fast, so... So hopefully, I don't know who does that zoning board report to, or they own separate entities?
They're a judicial body.
They're independent, right? They're a judicial body, and they're independent, and neither the Borough Council or the planning board can interfere with an application that's before the zoning board.
Are they all Somerville residents, or are they other residents?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. All Somerville residents.
So I hope you all heard my message.
All I can tell you is the zoning board does a good job. They do. There had to be a compelling reason for that to be allowed to happen. What that is, I don't know. Will I find out? Yep. And I just don't know what that compelling reason is.
Do you understand my concern about what precedent this sets for High Street?
Yeah, I do. It's... But any time... So whether a resident wants to do something in their yard that doesn't comply with the zone, they're sent to the zoning board.
Yeah.
And there has to be a compelling reason. So it doesn't matter the size, the scale, the depth, the breadth. It goes to... If it doesn't fit within the constrict of the zoning ordinance...
Yeah.
You go to the zoning board. That's what happens.
I can't imagine any reason that they would approve that, because it ruins the character of that street.
Well, again, you have to... You have to ask them.
I understand that. I hear that, but I'm here today asking the question.
But again, we're not allowed to interfere with that. We're not allowed... These are autonomous judicial bodies.
Wow.
And you cannot... You can't. There's...
So how do we protect Somerville? How do we protect ourselves?
When there's an application like that up, just like, you know, when there is a planning board application, people come here and they stand up and, you know, they object to it or whatever, and then that's the discussion that's had. But it has to be at the appropriate...
It's so easy to miss those meetings, though, if you're not paying attention every single time, you know? I mean, as things get through and it...
Yeah, I'm out five, six nights a week at meetings.
I know you are, yeah.
And, you know, it's... I'm wrapping my head around everything that's gone on over the past six years, so it's going to take a little time.
Yeah.
Excuse me, sir. The zoning board meets next Wednesday. No, the second one, third Wednesday, they meet in one.
First and third. I don't know if they're meeting in the first. Okay.
They don't meet the first, but they'll meet the third Wednesday.
March 20?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, McKeel Mullenberg, 31 Eastern Avenue. Again, per the council's recommendation, we're remaining involved in a variety of topics when it comes to planning the town. The one question I had, and an idea that I had, because I want to kind of come with, you know, some thoughts, is there's a few committees that were formed recently to try to address a couple areas of the town. I'm wondering, since you all are actively going to be going into a planning session, you're looking to do, you know, kind of a revision of the plan. I asked last time, how does the public get involved in providing input and feedback? I assume there's some sort of form beyond just this, where I'm speaking right now, where I could be maybe a little more descriptive in my recommendations, but I wondered, is there... Not that I want to add 10 more committees to the board here, but is there... Has there been thought around an advisory committee of some sort from the residents around... Let me finish. Around drugs, alcohol, firearms as a category? Since that, right now, is kind of a cluster of topics, it seems to be very interesting to most of the residents. Things have happened over the past decades, some things which we would have preferred to have been more involved with or more informed about. So my main question is, I know there's an action on the table with the planning board and the council. I'd like to know how we remain involved and informed about decisions as they happen. You're hiring somebody through an RFP, assuming we'll be privy to that process when somebody's brought on board to help with planning.
Okay, let me explain the process. We are going to go through, once we get the professionals in place, we're going to discuss them, the issues that we're going to consider in public meetings. And the... You can sign up to get notified by the borough of all the events that are going on. You can go on the website and take a look and see what's coming up on the planning board agenda, or the zoning board agenda, or the council agenda. And it will be a public process for every single thing that we do. It's always a public process.
Okay. So beyond attending, and I'm aware of what's on the borough website in terms of what meetings are posted, but today's agenda was pretty vacant. It was really just come over, have a quick chat, and then you all have to obviously go into your planning session after this. So it doesn't leave a lot of time for discussion, you know? I don't want to drag this out, but I am concerned that we'll be going meeting to meeting, and it won't be... I'm concerned I won't hear much, and the rest of the town will be kind of waiting on what's next. How do I give my input? I don't want to have people giving input on Facebook, right? That's obviously not the mechanism here. But unfortunately, that is a lot of how misinformation spreads. So I'd like to use this forum, an official process, provide our feedback, our input. You give us feedback on what's been happening. I know you don't have a timeline yet, but I'm assuming the RFP has a end time in which they must comply with?
We're developing... We're going in to develop the RFP.
Okay.
That's what we're developing. So let me... I guess, let me talk to you about what... How we've handled this kind of thing in the past. And I assume that's going to be the same way it's going to be handled this time. So the professional will be hired, or professionals will be hired, and we'll task them... We have to determine what that latter is, whether it's master plan first, then redevelopment plan, zoning. We have to craft what that latter, what that importance level is. From that, the professional will begin to look at it, begin to tear it apart, begin to ask us questions. Once we get it into a forum, professionals will come and make a presentation on what that form is, and that's when we begin the opportunity for the board to question, you know, to pick it, to pick at it. And that's also the opportunity for the public to pick at it and ask questions. You know, it's a good process. It's worked very well over the 25 years that I've been involved, and it seems that everybody walks away and they're a part of that process. Is that fair enough?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, because, for example, today, you know, there's not a lot of people here. There may be some people listening or following along.
Yeah.
But my goal is to try to get more people involved, because if you're not here, you can't speak. I... But I don't want to keep coming back to meetings and just saying the same thing over and over again. I'm assuming there's going to be a way where we move forward.
You can also always email, like Jenna or, I don't know, Bernie, however it would work, and they can disseminate through the entire board, you know, your thoughts, concerns, et cetera, which sometimes works better, because they're not just shocking us with the now we have time to look into it and get an answer or come up with a solution, you know, before the next meeting to give an answer back.
So anything we send, by the way, to the planning board, does that become official record, or at least communication that I can say, on, you know, Wednesday, the 28th, I sent this mail to Jenna, to the board? It's been a month, I haven't heard anything, I'm assuming, and out of courtesy.
We receive... The board receives all of the mail, all of the correspondence that we get. And anything that happens at the meeting is part of the record. A letter isn't necessarily part of the record unless it's entered into at the meeting. So you can send a letter, and there are times when a board member will bring it up, or a resident can bring it up at the meeting. It's just, you know, every resident in town cannot be individually notified every time something's going on, and that's... I mean, the law says if you're within 200 feet and there are variances, that you get notified.
Yeah, I'm aware of that process, actually. I want to make sure if I have a list of recommendations, I have an opinion, or I have, hey, I think this might be useful to the team here, just like what Bill was saying. If we have a concern, we want to be more elaborate about our description, rather than just a verbal description. I want to give you a write-up of what I've seen, maybe pictures of something I've seen. I'd like to make sure that's not just going into a, let's say, what they call kind of a dead letter queue, an inbox that doesn't go anywhere, right? So I'll come to these meetings, but I'm not giving you a piece of paper today, but I may have something more elaborate I want to share, including other committees that might be of use over time in Somerville. So I'm a bit repetitive here, it's because I want to make sure I'm being heard. I'm speaking for a lot of other people that aren't here right now, and I don't want them all coming up eight times saying the same thing, so...
I think that's a good point. I mean, if you can aggregate some of these issues, concerns, as we go through this process, and be a part of, you know, the development of that, then that's a great thing, because when folks come up and it's the repetition of what you're saying, you know, four, five, and six times, you know, everybody here has time too. And, you know, that's... If you can kind of aggregate some of that, that's great.
Right, realizing that's, you know, based on information I'm gathering, that of course introduces a certain bias, you know, based on what I'm obviously trying to put forward there, so...
And so you know, our job, the planning board's job, is to vet through that, and you'll see the vetting of those different opinions and convictions on what is appropriate in a zone, what is not appropriate in a zone, what we think we should change, what we shouldn't change. And you'll see that dialogue go on at this table.
Okay. And then I'll just one final question. I think this was answered last time. Anything that is in place today, right, is considered grandfathered into the plan, or is there at some point, let's say, a house that's five stories tall, that goes against the master plan 10 years from now? I obviously can't tell them to tear it down, but is there ever an adjustment or requirement to comply with new standards?
Yes.
Okay. So even something that was being built today, a few years from now, you could say it's not part of the master plan?
It's not part of the zoning.
Part of zoning.
Yeah.
But once it takes place, once it's there, we can't put them out of business.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
So...
So it's grandfathered, for lack of a better term, it's... Yeah.
So follow up on that. Whenever there's a...
It's called...
Is there a renewal to permits to doing things? Let's say, let's talk about retail again. If you're a licensed retailer on Main Street or wherever else, how long does a permit last for, and do they have to reapply for a permit and be reevaluated again? Meaning, is there a statute of... A statute of, in terms of how long a permit is legitimate for?
I don't know what you mean by a permit.
So if a business opens up, I'm kind of being a bit indirect here. A business opens up, do they have to reapply for their right to do business, you know, let's say on Main Street? I mean, other than like, does it...
No, so using that same...
Yeah.
Pre-existing, it's called pre-existing nonconforming. That's the fancy term for it. So if they are a pre-existing nonconforming business, so let's say we change the zoning downtown and we exclude, you know... That'll never happen.
Don't do that.
And if they're open, we can't say, get out.
Okay. I had a feeling that was the case, but I'm obviously asking for some underlying reasons, so...
Yeah, I would encourage you to look into the municipal land use law. That explains a lot of the rules that we have to live by, and it's all about process. So if you get a chance, and it's a state law, and it governs how we operate, and it governs how the Board of Adjustment operates.
Yeah, I'll do my best. I don't know how long it is.
I can tell you, it's a dry read.
It's very exciting. So while I appreciate the suggestion, I'm also coming here for help summarize what something means. So if I have a specific question, you can answer, this is what that means, right? So I may not understand the code. Obviously, that's not... I'm not on the board, it's not in my profession, I'm a resident. I know as much as I do from my own, you know, home and my own environment, so I'll do my best, but I can't guarantee I'm going to be able to cite every item there.
No, but it's good to understand the relationship between the Borough Council, the planning board, and the zoning board, and how they operate independently. That's... It's... And that's all governed by statute. It's just the way it works. The challenge is, if we do something wrong, we can be held accountable for that.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're governed by state law, we're governed by state statute, and if we do something wrong, the ramifications personally and as an elected official or an appointed official are pretty serious. So, you know, we have to take things very thorough.
Right, and each member of this board, and the Board of Adjustment, and the Borough Council, takes an oath of office every time they're either reelected or reappointed. So it's not like we're just up here having a good time.
No, that's not what I was meaning. It doesn't look like it right now.
Okay. And I think we all got involved, including me, and that was 35 years ago. I got involved because, just like you, I saw things going on that I didn't like, and I approached the people in power, the governing body, and I said, I really want to get involved. And that's how I started. And it was... It was because I wanted to know how to do it, why things were happening, and that's why I'm encouraging you to look into the municipal land use law, because while it is dry reading, it will explain to you what the relationships are.
Okay, just be prepared, I may come with questions after I read it. So you've been warned.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, anybody else? We'll close the public session. Okay, so we need a motion to...
Second?
To executive session.
And then just for the record, before we take the vote, when we come out of executive, we will go back into open, but no action will be taken.
Correct. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Chairman Novato?
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilman Vroom?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Craska?
Yes.
Mr. Krestes?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to turn the mics off. There, well, mine stays on.
So it's a few standing in the bumper, just to know that you're still...
I never get them off.
You guys own that room, we're going to be there.
We'll watch it later on YouTube.
No, all the...
They're on. They're all on.
How do we do this?
So I'll make a motion. Second.
Okay. Jenna?
Chairman of the Senate?
Yes.
Ms. Zensky?
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilman Vroom?
Yes.
Ms. Sider?
Yes.
Mr. Kraska?
Yes.
Mr. Crestes?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.